We're gonna call, oh, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Yep. Don't even. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Calavita.
Dr. Genovacy.
Here.
Dr. Lilliston. Mr. Peters.
Here.
Dr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Slotman. Dr. Stilianou. Dr. Wilson. We have a quorum.
Okay, great. Uh, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law has enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 7th, 2025. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Thios. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. This meeting is being recorded for the purpose of board review for future reference, preparation of the meetings, and viewing on YouTube, Bulldog TV, and the school district website, hvrsd.org. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What are we approving minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the August 11th regular meeting? All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries. First report is from our, um, report of the Central High School Student Representative, which we do not have here, nope. Oh, we're gonna invite Principal Riley up.
Back in the, back in the day, Dr. Resnick, I actually was the representative on this whole quarter.
Of course you were.
One of my very, very favorite things about high school. But since I haven't been invited back, I am really excited to introduce our student repres, one of our student representatives for this year to all of you. Um, her name is Eileen Zhang. She is a current senior here at HVCHS. And one of my very favorite things about her is the fact that she is multi-talented and multifaceted. Um, she's absolutely brilliant, one of our national merit semifinalists. You'll learn more about her and the rest of them at the meeting in November, which I'm hoping you'll invite me back to. However, um, in addition to her amazing test-taking skills, she's also incredibly academically driven in a range of different ways. Who takes AP French, AP English, AP Environmental Science, and another AP Science, um, and has equal amounts of interest in all of those things? She's really impressive. She is also impressive because of her commitment to the environment and her commitment to our community. She is one of the onsite managers for the Pennington Farmers Market, and she is also a land steward intern for the Friends of Hopewell Valley Open Space. So her commitment to not only trying to improve the environment for everyone, but also really bringing our community together through those efforts is something that's, that's really commendable. Uh, she's an asset to our student council, and I'm excited that she'll be joining you this year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Are you gonna introduce the other student rep?
If I could do that at the next board meeting, that would be great.
Cause I know she couldn't make it today, so we'll definitely, but could you share her name with the board just so that I could?
Grace Corvalline will also be joining us as our second board representative, and I have a laundry list of wonderful things to tell you about Grace. We can do it now if you'd like, but I was hoping she would be here to hear all the wonderful things.
No, I think she wants to hear it.
If you don't mind, we'll, we'll pause on that one.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much.
Awesome. Our board president, as you have noticed, is ill tonight, so we are going to, uh, forego our president's report, and I will hand it over to Dr. Therese for our superintendent report.
Thank you. Um, before I begin my superintendent's report, um, I think our student rep just came in. Is she ready to give a, a brief report?
She is, but in addition to everything else that I already told you about, the fact that she just came here straight from tennis, uh, speaks again to the multi-talented, multi-faceted people.
Yes, we're gonna give you a minute to get set, and while we're doing that, we have some other special guests that I'm going to go ahead and introduce while Ms. Zhang gets, gets comfortable and gets ready for her report. Um, I know that many of you have been following, um, the work that, um, one of our, our younger board members, um, Mr. Kabadia has been involved, um, working with some of our government officials, specifically Senator Turner, to get an appropriation of $125,000 to build an accessible playground at Bear Tavern. And our community is so amazing, especially the Bear Tavern community, that they were able to procure the rest of the funds, uh, some community members and parents who are connected to Bear Tavern, uh, donated the rest. So we have, um, Mr. Billy here to share a little bit about the, the donors today and the foundations that they represent.
Good evening, good evening. Um, just really quickly, um, we are very blessed to have with us tonight, um, Mr. Andrew Waller. Mr. Waller, uh, represents the, uh, First Day of School Foundation, and, uh, I wanna thank them for their generous gift. Mr. Waller, come on, come on. Everybody should see these people. Their daughter Ryan is a student at Bear Tavern, and I believe they have two high schoolers as well, Andrew and Suzanne Waller. And, um, also here tonight are, is Mr. Morehouse and his mother and father, George Elizabeth Smith Foundation, and I wanna thank them for their generous gift to help us get this playground started. Come on up. We're, we're very lucky to have, um, these people who just talk to each other and just say, hey, let's do something great for our school. And, um, I also wanted to make sure, I, I, I know you already said it, but, um, thank Mr. Kabadia for getting this ball rolling, um, and, and the playground started, secured the funding. So Bear Tavern is very grateful for the amazing donations and grants, and we look forward to the day, hopefully this spring, uh, when we can invite them back for ribbon cutting.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just give the numbers of how, how powerful this contribution was. $30,000 will, will, has come from the Smith, um, Foundation, the George and Elizabeth G. Smith Foundation, 45,000 were from, um, the Morehouses, and the, and the rest came from the, um, the Wallers and the, the schools, uh, Schools First Foundation, School Kids First Foundation. And their work is specifically around helping students, uh, that have disabilities be able to have accessible experiences in school. So they and their children are gonna be involved in helping to pick out the playground and help design it, so we're very excited about having the whole community and involved in, in the playground design. So thank you so much, and thank you for your generosity and your commitment to our children.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to accept the donation.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, so.
Thank you so much.
Good night. So I'm gonna go ahead and give my, um, superintendent's report. We have a lot on the agenda tonight, um, but there are some things that I wanna, uh, lift up before we, um, kick off the rest of our. Oh, I'm sorry, you ready to go? Okay, sorry. Yes.
Okay, perfect. Again, sorry for my late arrival, um, but my name is Eileen, and I'm a senior at HVCHS. So in August, to prepare for the start of the new school year, we organized transition activities for our incoming freshmen and new students. These included a scheduled walkthrough and open house, both supported by our Leadership Corps member and Service Learning Pathway students. Following the first day of school, the class of 2026 celebrated, celebrated their senior sunrise on the Ackerson Field that Friday. School-wide, we'd held class meetings where we went through guidelines, attendance policies, and other expectations. Additionally, starting since August, the newly-instated driver safety meetings for seniors to receive parking have all been successfully conducted. All sports and fall extracurriculars have also successfully started up, again alongside the school start, from girls' field hockey, girls' tennis, cross-country, soccer, marching black and gold, collar guard, girls' volleyball, and football, who are all carrying out their scrimmages, cap practices, and games. We wrapped up last week with a football win against Notre Dame on Friday. Coming in the second half of September, we will have the Activity Fair to encourage all students to participate in the many clubs available in the high school. Next week, we will start the First Spirit Week of 2026, culminating in the Fall pep rally that Friday. Saturday, the 27th, will then mark the first-ever alumni reception in the morning, and then the homecoming dance at night. Thank you for everyone's time.
So did you win today? Your tennis match, was it practice or meet? It was, it was a match? And did you win? No? Uh, sorry to put you on the spot. Oh, not bad, good showing, very good showing.
We'll take it.
Maybe I'll try to speak loudly, um, is that okay?
Turn it over and see if it, and put it on auto.
There you go. Okay, how's it now?
Better.
Better? Okay. Well, I just wanted to welcome you, Ms. Zhang, and just for folks who weren't aware, we actually modified our bylaws last year in order to increase student participation and really elevate and better integrate student voice into the board activities. So we're super, super excited to have you here in this enhanced capacity and look forward to involving you more in the activities and in the deliberations of the board. So thanks for joining us.
Thank you so much, and I know in your, um, extended capacity, we're asking that, if you can stay until at least the first public comment, but we know this is your first meeting, um, and that the, the two representatives will be alternating because they both have very packed schedules, and so this will give them an opportunity to weigh in on some of the things that we're doing a little bit more, and we're gonna be inviting members, the, the two members into some of our committee meetings, especially when we're making decisions that are specifically about students, so you could get to be, weigh in on that as well. So thank you so very much for coming tonight. So I will go ahead and start my, um, superintendent's report. Again, I will keep it brief because I know we have a lot on the agenda this evening. Um, so I just wanted to give you an update on a couple of things, uh, mostly the referendum. So Mr. Calavita? So we have been getting out in the community, we have a large outreach, outreach calendar, and I know that you've seen me at a lot of events and our board members. We will continue to get out, uh, back to school nights, we'll be at the Harvest Fair, we were at the Hopewell Carnival, I was at a senior citizen picnic recently with a, with one of our, um, community, um, relations, uh, parents that are volunteering to get the word out. You should see lots of posts on social media that we're putting out as well. While we cannot engage with some of the, the back and forth that goes on, um, we're making sure that we're posting on our social media, and there are some parents that are, and community members that are part of our Get Out the Word campaign, that will be posting things like, "Visit our websites," or trying to get the, the facts out to the community. Um, we, uh, also are publishing mini articles, uh, if you check, uh, the Mercer Me, Hopewell Express, we're trying to make sure that we're putting out lots of, of, of articles that are published by us, but there are also many articles that are letters to the editors that have been published by some of our faculty, and, um, I believe some parents are also writing some, um, very soon. I had a mini town hall at Bear Tavern on Friday, and I also attended their picnic, and we will be having a larger virtual town hall, which I'll show you the save the date on the last slide, and this slide deck will be attached to the agenda for anyone who is not here, um, when we publish this. And we've been pushing it out in email to folks, but we know that, uh, everyone is not on our listserv as far as, they're not parents. So please feel free to share the save the date for our virtual town hall with any community member, anyone can, can attend and have their questions answered. We're doing a Zoom webinar so we can take large numbers of people, and, um, please feel free to send us questions in advance, and we will also make sure that we cover those things that we're hearing, um, over and over again in, in communications and social media or that's coming through emails to me or the board. And then finally, we'll be offering lots of, uh, alumni tours and visits for those people that have graduated, who still live in the, uh, from our schools and still live in the area. Um, there's a lot been going on through our centennials, our, our 100-year celebrations of Tollgate and Hopewell Elementary. I know they're already offering tours to some of the folks that are still in the community that attended those elementary schools. Um, it, as a matter of fact, Tollgate, um, at the opening, um, first day of school, when they had everyone back on the blacktop in the back, we had three women who had gone to, um, Tollgate, one of which, one of whom, um, father, grandfather was responsible for the district looking like it looks. He was part of the first, you know, expansion of the district, so it was amazing to have them there. We're still looking for the time capsules, though, we can't find them. We're doing our best, so if anybody knows where they buried them, we've had the, we've dug everywhere, we've had the metal detectors out, we can't find it. So we're doing what we can, so if anybody knows where that is, please let us know. I don't know if anybody's still around, but we can't find the time capsule. But the kids will be doing a new one, and we'll do a better job of keeping track of this one. So, so if you wanna go to the next one? So what's proposed in the referendum vote? The referendum vote is, will be on November 4th during the regular election. We have two proposed questions. I put flyers on everyone's seat, so if you can't see that little teeny tiny writing, because I know I can't from here. Um, you have a flyer that has the questions on it in more detail about the, the, uh, projects, and if you turn the flyer over, the tax impact, the general idea of what the tax impact to, to you based on whether you vote one question or two questions, and, um, based on what municipality you live in, whether you're in Hopewell Borough, Pennington Borough, or the township, that will give you a general idea of what the tax impact will be. You can go to our website, which is also on there if you scan, and click on the tab at the top, um, that, that talks specifically about, um, the proposal, and you, there's calculators in there, there's, um, a link to find out that, what your, um, appraised value of your home is. Folks have asked for a calculator where you can just plug in and get that instantly, but because there's three municipalities and two question variables in there, we would have to have four calculators to do that. Although we're, we're working on trying to design those, um, it, it's cumbersome to try to create something that's gonna give you one complete answer, so we're trying to give you, uh, as best as we can, an idea until we can maybe identify a way to do calculators. But in, in a nutshell, the two questions are divided into two in this way. The first question is, is the cost of just the building integrity, critical infrastructure systems repairs that we need. So this is HVAC, this is, uh, repairs to our doors, our, our building structures, um, like, or wells for, um, Toget, Timber Lane and Bear Tavern, things that if they were to fail, they would cause, cause, cause a catastrophic failure that would maybe cause an interruption to school, or it's a risk to our students if we don't repair them. Those things are going to be matched by the state up to 40%, which will mean for us $20 million that we will get back as taxpayers, that you'll get relief. We have to bond out the whole amount first, and then they will give us 20 million back. That's the only way you can access the state funding, is by going to referendum and asking for it in this, this format. So when folks are asking us, how are we planning ahead? This is how districts plan ahead for facilities challenges, because the way we're being funded now, it's very, very difficult to save enough money out of your operating budget, which is very limited. We're capped at 2%. Most of our budget is tied up in, in faculty and staffing, that's 90% of our budget. You're saving from year to year, and the projects, really, you start putting off things because you can't afford to fix them, and then when you have aging buildings like we do, then it catches up to you to a point where you can't wait, because things start just failing. Uh, again, I just shared that we have two buildings, two schools that are 100 years old, so is your board office. Your board office is 100 years old as well. Um, the, this school, the middle school, uh, in Bear Tavern was built in the 60s, and they still have a lot of the original infrastructure. And then the newest school is over 20 years old. So a lot of ti, we're, we're getting really behind on these projects, uh, we're kicking the can for years because we did not have the funding, and we're just, it's getting away from us. Even when we planned, and our facilities director, who was here today giving you a tour of, of a lot of the work that was done here, he works very hard to, and with our BA, with our Finance and Facility Committee, to do long-term and short-term planning, and then it gets blown up with one unforeseen project, like the sewer failing at Bear Tavern just recently, like the well failing at Timber Lane that happened last year, like the water pump failing in the cafeteria here at the high school that happened the day before school. Galvanized pipe failing in the parking lot here and then flooding not just our parking lot, but the library next door. Those things I cannot plan for. There was also a galvanized pipe that burst at the board office that we couldn't plan for, it's over, you know, it's 100-year-old, right, pipe? Um, so those sorts of things really throws, throws, um, a wrench in our projects, not to use a pun. So the only way to really get ahead of it is to do a referendum, that's why you see other districts in New Jersey doing these, and they do them every three to five years. This district has not had the culture where we've done referendums, and we're really in a place where we, we don't have the option to not avail ourselves of these funds, because the only way we can access these funds that US taxpayers pay into anyway is through a referendum. Now, the second question is the expansion. This came out of our, our many, many discussions that we had after our first failed referendum in September, where folks said, you know, it's just too much money when we ask for the 87 million. Um, so we split it into two questions, breaking it down in what was covered and could be matched by state funding and what would not be. The growth that we're experiencing in this community, though we are feeling the impact of it right away, uh, parents are, and parents are feeling it right away, uh, is not covered by the state. So though they're ta, they'll cover a little bit of the drainage prop, process on one of these builds, generally it's not covered. So the two additions that we're proposing to deal with the increased enrollment that we're facing, and also get rid of the trailers outside that are, are really, to me, a security risk. I don't like the idea, especially in this day and age, where we, where school shootings are becoming so frequent, and weather is becoming so volatile, the idea of having students still outside in trailers that, that have been there for over 30 years, Ms. Riley shared that she actually took classes in one of those trailers when she was a girl. So they've been there that long. It's time for our students to be in the building? Yes, she was in the trailer, y'all. Okay, taking a class. Yes. Yes, okay, yeah, there were music lessons because music teachers didn't have classrooms back then, and you took it in the, in the trailer, right? So, so that's, those trailers have been there that long, so that's, that's, that's really unacceptable to me, and I, I would, I think most of our parents here too. So Bear Tavern and Tollgate both have proposed additions that would add 10 classes, though they will be equipped to accept any grade level, including preschool and kindergarten, I know that was also a misconception, those aren't the only grades that can go in there, but we're equipping them to fit for any kid, because you cannot put kindergarteners or preschoolers in a classroom that does not have a bathroom. It's a G code. So you, but you can put a fifth grader in a classroom with a bathroom, right? Um, so we'll make sure that we are, um, equipping those so that any grade student can go into it, so we can take students that are coming, um, no matter what grade they're in. So, um, I, I know that there's a lot of misconceptions in the community that I've heard as I've been going around on our tours with our board members. Um, the first is, there is this idea that the district has not been, and has not had a plan for growth, and that's not true. The first plan, and the biggest plan, is to build, right? And the only way that I can build is through a referendum, because I don't have the funds for that. Um, so in September, when we went out to referendum, one of the things that we all talked about a lot when we were trying to, to, um, get the information out about the first failed referendum was the need for expansion because we knew students were coming. And I think there was an idea that this would not have the impact that it has on the district. Um, the demographer report showed, um, a low report, a medium report, and a, and a, a larger report of students, and they, they suggested then that we would have students that were unhoused, meaning we wouldn't have enough room based on the way we currently operate and our current programming, based on the enrollment coming. And it is coming now, our class size is coming up, which we knew. Um, the referendum failed, and so that's why we're coming back again. If we don't build, this is gonna continue to be a problem. It's also a problem financially, because the building issues that we have are one problem. The second problem is our general operating budget is not fully funded by the state. If we are capped at 2%, and occasionally we can get a healthcare waiver to defray the cost of healthcare, which we're gonna talk about in a minute, or occasionally we get a waiver to defray the cost of enrollment, which we've gotten a little bit, but not enough to build or to address the number of students that are coming yet in a way that would allow me to add additional teachers. We are still struggling with inflation through the roof, with the cost going well beyond our budget. So in this, all last year, when we were talking about budget, we really talked to you about the need to, to do some serious cuts and to increase class size, because we can't continue to do what we used to do based on the funding we're getting. So we did a lot of things that were uncomfortable. We talked about class size being one of them, and even if I wanted to split all the classes, I literally can't afford to split every class that's 24, 25, or 26. I can't do it anymore. We can't afford to do it, especially since we don't know what's coming with special education classes, which we absolutely have to split. And that includes any inclusion class, a, a class that's mixed. You can only have so many students that are special needs in a class, even if it's general education, before you have to split it. We are literally running out of space in the building, we are running out of budget. Um, the budget we struck in the spring is already in jeopardy. Um, Mr. Calavita can share some of what we're facing with healthcare already in the first month of school. You wanna talk about what, what, the claims that we have just for the month of August?
So, uh, we, we budget, you know, our budget is increased last year about 15% in healthcare. You're talking, uh, our healthcare budget is in excess of $20 million, okay? We're spending, um, in, in the, a general area of $2 million a month in healthcare. Um, Dr. Therese mentioned to me at one of her, her discussions this week that a, a resident said, well, why don't you just, you know, increase co-pays or increase, you know, the deductibles and things like that? Unfortunately, we are not able to do that. Our, our contracts are collectively bargained, and, and those are benefits that have been secured by those, those bargaining units, um, and that's a statewide, uh, issue. Governor Murphy also instituted something called Chapter 44, um, which was a law that, that kinda struck, put a, um, like a placeholder for health benefits, and any new staff member that we hire is required to get those, those benefits. That does not sunset until 2027. So years ago, before Chapter 44, this district and all of our associations worked together. Unlike other districts in the state, we worked together to negotiate health benefits that generated savings for the district, but also, you know, maintain benefits for the employees. We, we no longer can do that. The health benefit plans that we negotiated, um, were less rich and more advantageous to both sides, enabling costs to be shared, uh, but the, the governor took that away. So we have tried in the past to negotiate better health benefit rates and to, to keep costs down, but that's been taken out of our hands. So at this point, um, we are a self-insured outfit right now. Um, I thank God we're self-insured, because if we weren't, we'd be paying the, uh, projected 38, I'm not joking, 38% increase in January that's being instituted by the New Jersey State Health Benefits Plan. So we will not be affected by that. But health benefits are, as a general rule, going up. I mean, the cost of, of delivering health, health benefits and health services in this country is going up, so that's going to be a huge part of our budget next year and something that we don't have relatively little control over.
So the plan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll just add to this, um, you don't need to believe Bob, uh, Wall Street Journal just published an article that basically said that, um, most private companies that do have significant negotiating power that we don't, expect their cost of their health insurance to go up well above 10% in the coming health insurance to go up well above 10% in the coming year, as much as 20% for many, many large companies. This is going to be a killer beyond this district, but with a 2% cap and what we can do with operating expenses, it's a real killer for any school district. Now, this year, the state gave us an exception. So we were able to go above cap specifically for health benefits. But again, that's not a, it's one of those things that saves us from making very, very deep cuts, but it does, but it does have an impact on the property taxes of those. So something, ultimately, something else will probably have to be done about the health benefits issue.
Again, as you mentioned, I expect there to be a waiver for health benefits this year, but as you said, the impact gets passed on to, to our taxpayers. I will, I will be meeting tomorrow morning with our health benefit consultant who will, is going to, is talking about trends in the market and we'll be sharing that or spinning that out to the finance committee on the 6th. Hopefully that's when we're going to meet.
I'm going to miss that meeting?
You can call me.
Just because I don't want to hear the bad news.
And I would like them to listen to me, to Alex, when you said that.
So the, the, the plan is that we need to get the word out for referendum. I'm hopeful that it's successful this time because we have to see that expansion now if we want our parents to see relief. We have to, to see that now and start building sooner than later. We've already started some minor redistricting, but we're going to have to look at more, more comprehensive redistricting for the 26th, 27th school year. So we are working very closely with Hopewell Township. I have asked them to help us fund and they've agreed a new study, demographic study with the same demographer, based on what we're currently seeing with the way folks are coming into the district. So now we have an idea of what it looks like because they're coming. He's also going to explore any proposals that they have in the future for expansion in addition to the expansion that may or may not be proposed in both boroughs. They will look at all of those numbers and the possible impact that it could have to the district. And I've also asked him to give us a report on what redistricting could look like for our elementary schools, all four of them. So we have to do a shift because what I cannot do is shift students from Stony Brook necessarily and depending on where the houses are and way over at Bear Tavern over to Hopewell Elementary. That creates a transportation issue and kids being on buses for over an hour, which is not ideal either. So we're going to have a really more comprehensive study done. Having more classrooms at Tollgate could help, will definitely help. And having more classrooms at Bear Tavern will definitely help for us to be able to do that, take a scalpel approach to redistricting versus a hacksaw where we have to say, okay, whole swaths over here at Tollgate need to go to Bear Tavern so that we can shift things over from Stony Brook and from Bear. What is tough is, is that we're having enrollment increasing, but it's increasing in concentrated grade levels. If those three siblings and they're all coming in and there's several coming in in first grade and then there was a fifth grader and a second grader, I can't split up a family and we can't have people crisscrossing across the neighborhood without adding a bus I can't afford, right? We've already added another route. So we're trying to do it in a way that's reasonable, what makes sense and understanding there's only so much splitting of classes I can do because I'm just eating into a budget that's already struck and that means I'm going to have to take away programming or something that we have budgeted for later in the year because I'm not going to have the money left. There's no, the money that we budget for is it. We don't grow money because we decided to add more people. We struck a budget based on the teachers that we had at the time and what could be a possible growth, but we're, we're well beyond that because of some of the costs that are, that are coming up with healthcare, with the cost of inflation for just buying things, with repairs. It's just getting untenable. So if we're going to release this pressure valve, we need this to pass. The first question, well, could, if it doesn't pass, then the second question can't, meaning we can't say yes to the additions and not replace the infrastructure. It would be like adding an addition on your house and you don't have a water heater, air conditioner or any of that, right? So the first question is tied to the second question. A lot of people ask, why do we have it as a separate question if it's so essential? Because we listened to the community and you all said that you wanted to have a choice and it is your choice. So we're leaving it to you in those two questions, but I'm telling you, if it were up to me, it would be one question because I feel strongly, and I know our parents feel strongly as they're feeling it now and they're with us, as our schools are getting crowded, that they're both very essential. So I'm hoping that we both, that we all show up to support this or at least get the facts and make an informed decision. So the final thing I wanted to be, to talk about is the 16.1 million. There's some rumor out there that folks believe that if question two fails, that we'll still get the 16.1 from the township to build on Bear Tavern. The issue with the 16.1 that they've promised and we're working on trying to draw up an agreement now with them is they can't commit to anything until the litigation is done with Pennington Borough. That can be anywhere from a few months to a couple of years. And in the meantime, we saw what happened between the first referendum failing in September of 14, and September 14th and now. The inflation has made the referendum almost the same amount with less stuff in it. So that build at Bear Tavern is not going to cost 16.1 if we're still looking at this two years from now. And remember, I didn't have the promise for the first referendum. So now we'd have to go back and try to renegotiate again in a year or two to try to get whatever the new cost is. And you, none of you will see that in, in the time your children are in the schools, right? So if we want something to happen as soon as possible, we need to have this now. And there, then we can work on if they're bonding it out, if they're paying down the debt service, that will lower the debt impact on every municipality, not just Bear Tavern. We can figure out that if you all decide to vote this yes, and then we know where we are from there. So how can you help? Please be informed. I know social media is a quick and easy way and people post things. A lot of times people misunderstand school finance or what we can do and what we can't do. Like for example, recently a community member reached out about the, the tour buses that we're driving the kids to at the turf field. I know many of you were in the room where we talked about, we have to bid out to get buses to transport our children to the turf field. And the tour buses were cheaper than the yellow buses and we always, always have to go with the lowest bid. We always have to go with the lowest bid. And we don't have enough buses ourselves and there aren't enough busing companies around anymore to run the kids ourselves. And we have lots of sports running from this building every day. So that community member, I was very grateful, reached out to me and asked a question and he's like, oh, now I understand. If something seems like odd to you or it just seems like it, it doesn't seem right, please feel free to email us and reach out, call. I will take a call. I will, I will email you back. I, you know, I'll come meet with groups of you if you want to pick my brain about something or ask questions. We're an open book. Everything that we do is done in open court for you all to see. So please go to the website or just call us up if you don't want to try to navigate the website and ask your questions. Come to our, our webinar and ask your questions. We try to put it in lay terms so that you can understand the very complicated way that we have to operate and purchase and plan for things in school districts. It's not the same way that you have to deal, you deal with your own housing, your own house and your repairs for your house. We have referendum tables at every back-to-school night at all these events. Come up and ask questions and volunteer to help. I got a few emails today that parents wanted more kindergarten paras than I can afford to give right now because again, we have to prioritize for special education and we also have kindergarten paras that really I shouldn't be adding to a kindergarten class until they get to 25. And, and we don't have any kindergarten classes at that size, right? But we still have them in this district, but I can't continue to add them. I don't have the money. And if I did have the money, I probably couldn't even hire them anyway. They're hard to hire. And then when we do have someone that comes in, the priority is an IEP first. So volunteering and coming in and being a mom in a kindergarten class and supporting us or a dad or a caregiver is also extremely helpful. There's a fingerprinting process you have to go through if you're going to be with our kiddos, but we would love to have you to come into the classrooms and help and support in that way.
I was just going to add that. Another question that I see a lot from the community, and I think it's sometimes confusion, confusing, is that the budget for all of these referendum items, that people think that once we pass, you know, the 58.4 million, then we can do whatever we want with that money, that we can do a bait and switch. And that absolutely is not true. But I hear it over and over again on social media that, you know, this might happen and we're going to pay for staff or administration. And the fact is that the state is very rigid and oversees every penny of that and we can only pay for what we put in the referendum from the beginning. And so the referendum is for capital expenses that are completely listed out and that money can't go towards, say, a teacher or administration costs. But it's a question that comes up a lot.
Yes, it is. And we can't do it twice. So for example, if, and this is down the road, I don't know when this will be or if it will be. If the township, say, takes responsibility for the Bear Tavern build, if this is successful, and they decide, if we find the mechanism, because no one's ever done it before, to bond it out, we can't double bond it. There will be one bond and it's either going to be under their purview and they have it and that relieves the tax impact, or we have it and then they pay down the debt services on that portion of it. So we can't do it twice and do something else with the money. That's not permitted. You have to use it specifically for what you said, for it to be approved by the state and they will monitor it heavily. So the last thing I wanted to show is I did say, please be informed and I will push this out in my superintendent newsletter, but I know everyone doesn't get that and we have published it in the newspaper and it will be in the newspaper and Mercer, and Mercer Me. This is the date of the virtual town hall. We will record it and post it on social media for you once it's done. We'll try to keep it to an hour because I know folks are very busy, but please send us your questions ahead of time. I will make sure I cover these things, again, that I just talked about today and things that we see that are kind of trending on social media or emails that I'm receiving or your principals are receiving or the board. We'll try to make sure that we get the information out as much as possible. Also follow us on social media or visit our website. And this, all this will be attached to the agenda digitally so you can just click on those links and register to come. So would the board members or the finance facility like to add anything before we move on? Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Next, we are going to have the Climate Action Committee give a report. Ms. McGrath?
All right, good evening. My name is Scott Patel. I'm lucky to be the principal at Hopewell Elementary School. I'm also here joined by Ms. Carolyn McGrath, who is an art teacher at Hopewell Valley Central High School. And we're fortunate to be the co-chair of the Climate Action Committee here for the district. Before we begin with our presentation, I would like to kind of maybe figure out, I don't know what's going on over at Tollgate, but Hopewell Elementary School knows exactly where their time capsules are at and will be successfully digging them, all right, later this year? All right? So hopefully Ms. Principal Laurie isn't paying attention right now tonight because I have a meeting with her at 9:30 tomorrow morning. All right, so before we begin, a little bit about the Climate Action Committee. This is just kind of like a highlight or showcase really of the fine work that a lot of members have done over the course of a year or so. You know, behind me are the, are the subcommittees that we have and you'll see they're broken up between the education, transportation, food and waste, resilience, as well as the facilities working group. Those are certainly the areas that we spend a lot of our time working on. And you can see, for the most part, we've pretty much had every single subcommittee report reviewed and approved by the board. So we appreciate that and we're looking certainly fortunate, fortunate we're working with the facilities subcommittee hopefully this fall. All right, so our first area is education. I'm going to call Ms. McGrath.
Thanks, thanks so much for having us. We promised not to take as much time as the slides look, but we did, I ended up just leaving them as is because we'd really like the board to see all of the work that our committee members did this year. One of the biggest areas was in education. I'm not going to read all of the things that are up there, so some of those we'll just kind of skim over, but each action area is broken down into sort of sub actions. And for the first action, the focus is on teachers, providing teachers with professional development. So just want to shout out Dr. Palitzis, who is so instrumental in all of the work we did on the education subcommittee and making sure that teachers from the district presented PD to other teachers during department members. She also was very kind to put content in the curriculum newsletter, which you can see on the next slide. Just some examples of things that go out to teachers, oops, sorry, that went out to teachers in the district about best practices for teaching climate change and some ways that teachers in the district are teaching climate change across disciplines currently. Going forward, we had a specialist from NJDP work with our STEM teachers and Next Yes Club worked with the faculty at Timber Lane and the high school to present professional development on climate change education. And this was for an S-Day that was last March, I believe. And so the students prepped essentially the faculty for it and kind of everybody energized and the teacher education cohort shared lessons to the faculty. And so we did that for a day last March. It was super successful. Oops, I think that, oops, that's, we did, oh, so that was beforehand, that was to prep, but this was, these are some examples of the S-Day, which is a special schedule activities. So some of the things you see here are, this was a culminating activity on the left where students had to pick different climate actions that they would commit to. And this was after a day of learning about different aspects of climate change, including solutions in their classes. This was something I did with my classes. It was an art-based activity. So some exciting news for professional development. If you could just go to the next slide. So we recently received the Epic STEM Mini Grants from STEM Teachers New York City. It's not a huge grant, but it's $1,000 and that will be earmarked for professional development in the district for teachers, by teachers, just after school. And so we're very excited about that funding for that project for next year. In terms of curriculum revision, that's been happening on an ongoing basis. In terms of integration of climate change across subject areas, I'm just going to summarize, there's been a lot of conversation Dr. Palitzis has led, making sure there's vertical articulation across grid levels and subject areas. And next slide. And culminating in a specific teaching of climate change in freshman biology, sixth grade science, fifth grade science and elementary STEAM exploratories. And there's a new elective at the high school, which is ecology, which has a service requirement, which we're pretty excited about. We continue to support Green Week experiences in all schools. You all saw that awesome presentation by the students. And Dr. Patel and I met with the green team leaders and one of the things, the teacher leaders, one of the things that we're trying to do is coordinate better across the schools and also to support those teachers, so providing funding opportunities and so on. Green volunteering opportunities, I had a lot of students working on this with our counseling department. So they updated our Climate Core website, which you can link to through the counseling department website. And they also created this volunteer sheet, which got shared out by counseling and it's volunteer opportunities for students. volunteer opportunities for students. One of the things we want to work on going forward is connecting students more with career opportunities as well. School gardens, you know, we have gardens at all of our schools. I just took this photo today of the beautiful school garden at CHS and talking about ways to support the garden teachers. So we facilitated a meeting again of all the garden club advisors and also created a document with resources for those teachers, trying to connect them both to funding as well as community resources and support. And finally, establishing outdoor learning spaces, which is, we're sort of in the beginning stages of that, but to complement outdoor education. And one of the things students in Yes Club did was create this document for teachers about kind of dipping your toes in the water of teaching outdoor education or integrating it into classes. And I will turn it over to Ms. McGrath.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. So the next area in our climate action work certainly is our transportation with the overall goal of eliminating carbon emissions and pollutions caused by certainly our district transportation. So as you can see, action one, trying to transition to zero emission for our school buses. With two, certainly incentivizing school bus riding and carpooling and some of the work we've done with that. Our Yes Club has been instrumental certainly in trying to get the word out, especially a survey. So moving along, we actually had the survey. We have some of the results here, which the board is privy to certainly all of this information. But you can see just in general, you know, how often you pick up your children from school in your personal vehicle in the afternoon. You're going to see, you know, nearly 20% every day, 15% most days. So that's, you know, a little over 35, 36% of just families right then and there individually picking up their children. All right. So again, just, just a small little sample of the survey that was given out. Our next, actually, the next, the next slide is just the documentation and communication of just ways to be eco-friendly. You know, I certainly shared it out in my school newsletter for Hopewell Elementary School and I know some of our principals are doing the same, but you're going to see this flyer just encouraging our families to just be eco-friendly to and from school, whether it's with refillable water bottles, you know, zero waste lunch, things of that nature. You're going to also see those wonderful no idling signs up, up and around campus. So please, if we can encourage our, our, our family members picking up and dropping off, just to kind of as a constant reminder, just to be certainly eco-friendly throughout that opportunity. Action three, promote biking and walking to school. I'm sure you've seen, you know, in some of the elementary schools, our walk, bike and roll to school days, as you can see on the slides and the pictures, there's a, actually Hopewell Elementary School, like, walk, bike and ride. Quick shout out to Gabe, thank you, Gabe. Here's Stony Brook, there's a picture there. So kids love it, the family members love it and even the neighborhood loves it, you know, we're kind of going by them, they just love seeing the kids, kids out there. Again, promoting biking and walking to schools, another action that we're working on are anti-idling laws, which I touched upon. And then the next work is really talking about kind of our district maintenance vehicles, trying to transition them to zero emission models if possible, improving our traffic flow, looking at possibly doing a traffic study with the students involved, possibly looking at installing electric vehicle charging stations. We worked with the township to kind of find out what's, what's necessary for that. So there's a lot of work in transportation still to be done, but we're taking the necessary steps for that. The other topic certainly that I'll, that I'll cover is our food and waste with the overall goal, working towards zero waste in all school operations and promote climate friendly foods in our school cafeterias. Action one is eliminating sources of food waste in general. So we're looking at our, again, working with our green teams to making sure that we're conducting waste audits so students can see in maybe the beginning and the end, kind of really what we are wasting and hopefully reducing. Again, reducing our waste stream contaminations, making sure our compost is going where it should be, making sure, you know, the necessary, you know, recyclables are going where they're supposed to. So again, really kind of looking at that. We worked certainly with a, with a company trying to get more fiscally responsible composters, either on, in district or just at least on one site. So we're certainly working with the board on that and researching those ways. Offering more plant-based meal options, trying to offer more in-season local food and organic foods, excuse me, reducing and working towards limiting plastic utensils and dishware as much as possible. And our green team, hopefully our leaders are looking into all of that and working certainly with our cafeteria staff and certainly the district. Number six, reducing and work towards eliminating plastic packaging, which I know Pomptonia has been great to work with and we're, we're looking to continue to kind of work and improve in that area. Reducing our, and working towards limiting all of our bottled water. Again, there's refillable water stations in, you know, multiple refillable water stations in each of the buildings, so continually promoting that. And then our last action certainly is reducing our overall school waste and switching just, just to more sustainable products. All right. So next I'll bring up Ms. McGrath for our resilience.
Okay. So our resilience committee is kind of separated into parts. It's both to prepare school buildings and grounds and I remember Dr. Trese mentioned a while ago about, you know, the extreme weather that our school buildings are having to deal with, but also to prepare students mentally, emotionally for those disruptions. So one of the things that our committee, this working group did was to generate a list of resources, share them with Dr. Trese, specifically about recent events such as wildfires, drought, air quality issues, which Dr. Trese shared in one of her newsletters. So just making sure that that information is available to families at times when elevated risk might be happening. So one of the things I'm really most proud about that happened this year was students from Yes Club created a presentation for elementary school students, talking about climate change and talking about their feelings about climate change and then transforming those feelings into empowered actions. And we went to all four elementary schools. I think I had 16 students. It was a little chaotic in terms of scheduling, but it was so incredibly rewarding and we did a few different grades, third, fourth primarily, and it was just really a wonderful, positive experience, especially for the, our students, but I hope also the students at the elementary schools. So we're hoping to do more things like that in the future. Scott and I also met with someone from CREW, which is an organization that helps organizations like schools and community organizations respond to extreme weather. So we've been in conversation with them and that's, that's it for facilities. I'm going to turn it back to Scott and then I'm going to jump on at the end.
So again, this is the last area that we're looking to work with, certainly the board getting approval on. But again, our actions are certainly, you know, the overall goal, decarbonizing schools and preparing them to withstand worsening climate change impacts. So action one, like we just said earlier, decarbonizing school buildings. Action two, maximizing our opportunities to advance these goals during renovations, maybe like during the referendum, hopefully that passes, new construction and end of lifespan facility replacements. Three, certainly reviewing and expanding the efficiency of our conservation practices. So, you know, a lot of this certainly, yes, at the board level and the community members that we can work with, but certainly our students have a voice in all of this as well. So our last action is, Carolyn's going to come up and talk about our fourth action.
Actually, third and fourth. So we also wanted to include our green teams, student green teams in water and electric efficiency practices. So that's something that we talked about, the green team leaders. And the last thing I wanted to mention was the incredible efforts of Mr. Drew Lloyd, who's in the back, and Dr. Steve Torro, respectively, from the Watershed Institute and Mercer County Planning, who have done a massive amount of volunteer work for the district, completing a stormwater review of all six campuses and created recommendations that they would like to share in more detail with the Board of Education. They created three different tiers of recommendations, so things that could be done fairly inexpensively, slightly more expensively, and then more expensively. And again, we're happy to share this with you and I believe Mr. Lloyd is very interested in following up, especially with the referendum and how those could be considered as part of the work of the referendum. And finally, I'm very excited about this. So we applied and received a climate resilience grant from the New Jersey Department of Education for $30,000 plus, a little bit more. And this will support the installation of new or additional rain gardens at each school, which is going to help with stormwater management. This includes hands-on lessons for students. A team of teachers met over the summer. We created curriculum that's based on climate solutions for stormwater. We have a partnership, a free partnership for PD, for teachers in our district and Monmouth, as well as cooperating schools like Rutgers, and we're partnering with Watershed Institute. And so these are some photos of the work we've done. We already started, it started in June and we're really excited to continue that work. So thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions at all?
I do. Hopefully it's more. Thank you. This is an excellent presentation and I've been so impressed by the work that this committee's been doing, so really, really appreciate it. I have lots of questions, but I'll limit it to two. So one is related to the federal funding streams around this work and I'm just wondering if changes to federal funding streams, with the change in the administration, have impacted any of the current work underway? So that's the first question. And then the second question may not be a fair one, but I'll ask it anyway because I understand that the sort of multi-tiered nature of this work is really important, but if sort of based on the research, based on the evidence, we were to really put our resources or energy behind three of these recommendations, what, two of these recommendations, what would they be? Where do you think we can get the biggest bang for our buck?
So to answer your first question, the big beautiful bill eliminated quite a bit of funding from the Inflation Reduction Act. So the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed during the Biden administration had a lot of funding for schools specifically. And there's, there's a website, it's called Undaunted K-12, and they specifically outline the way that schools can tap into money and it's direct funds, the direct payment goes to schools. My understanding is that not all of those programs have been eliminated. So for example, ground source heat pumps are still covered by like 50%. This is not under that, but the electric, the federal electric school bus funding is still in existence for at least a couple of years. So it's, it's mixed, but it's not affected anything that we've done, mostly because the, the big stuff has been facilities and transportation and those are big, big ticket items and they have to be, you know, kind of worked in at the right time. So they haven't affected anything currently. Yeah. What was your second part? Oh, that's a tough question. I think that we've focused on everything that we can do on our own and I think like with the help of course of like lots of administrators, especially, just want to give a big shout out to Dr. Trese and Mr. Calavita, you guys have been very supportive, but all of our administrators have been very supportive of this work. But yeah, it's, we've done as much as we can without kind of board involvement of like making big decisions. So I think it would need like more board involvement to determine like what you all, where you want to place your priorities.
So I have a question for you guys. We now have in the district, an organization that's kind of focused on this, it's fundraising in the green PTO. Have you been in touch with them to see if maybe they want to pick a project or two, adopt it and kind of fundraise to make that project happen?
Yes.
Cool.
They are not at the point of fundraising. We have specifically talked to them about, for example, the, the grant that we got from the state has a few little areas that we could use a little extra funding for. And so the ECO PTO comes to our meetings and several parents have been involved through our own, but we approached them about that and they said they're not there yet. So at some point, hopefully, yeah.
Okay.
Just a final note on this. I am working with a group right now that's trying to get us money for electric buses. We'll be scheduling a meeting with them to, they reached, they examined our facility to see if it was feasible and while it is, it's, it got potential. The issue right now is electric. We don't have it. So I don't have the electric service in place to be able to install the chargers to charge the buses and they don't give you money for electric service. They'll give you money for the chargers and give you money for the buses, but not for the upgrade to the electric. So the next meeting I'm having is to kind of ascertain just what it would cost to bring in the amount of electricity that you would need to fund, to run those. So we're trying, but you know, the last five times I've tried to get electric buses, even one or two, they've denied us and the big reasons for denial, not only are we not in an area, we, we aren't a district that qualifies a lot of times because it goes to, a lot of times they go to urban districts where the mileage on the buses works better because they're not traveling 30, 40, 50 miles a bus route, but that they have the electrical in place. It could be several hundred thousand dollars to bring in the proper electric to run it. So we'll see what they have to say, but we're trying.
Just to go back to, and I appreciate that also, this effort. Dr. Littleston, your question about like where, would we get our best bang for the buck? I, I do think that, you know, we'd have to look back at, we did the inventory last year with our consultant and looked at all of the places where we are spending or, you know, creating more emissions. I believe it's mostly facilities. And so I think that when we can start to look at some of the newer options for facilities, like heat pumps, especially if those are subsidized, I think that that's, that's where we're going to see our biggest actual emissions reductions from.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
So I shared with the, the board and we also post the full 49 slides. They have been very active as a, as a subcommittee of the board and they continue to really push the district into meeting our goal initiatives, our green initiatives, goals. A lot of them are tied to some pretty hefty expenses, but we are constantly seeking funding. There is still funding out there, but it's, you know, for some of the grant writers in the room, you really have to dig and, and look, but there are still some things that are, that are linked to green spaces and sort of efforts to increase farming and things like that. So there is money, but you really have So, there is money, but you really have to look for it, and it's getting far, further and far between. So, the help of an ECO PTO, I, we, I just had a meeting with them last week. I know they're organizing to do that, and they're, they're on board with supporting. But as much as we can raise, the better. I was at the Fovos event last night. The more that people that are really committed to this work contribute and try to fundraise, the more we'll be able to do some of the projects that we have planned. So, thank you. Thank you for all of your efforts. I know that was a lot to put into a short sentence, because you've been working hard for over a year. So, thank you so much.
Okay. So, we are going to kick off with our first budget presentation. For those of you who may not attend Board meetings all the time, throughout the year, each of our major sort of budgetary components will give a presentation to the Board and to you as the community on how we are thinking about budgeting for next year. And so, I encourage people, if you miss a Board meeting, to go back and look at the videos, because every meeting, we will have one of these budget reviews, and it really gives you insight into how the district is spending money and what the challenges might be for next year's budget. So, we are kicking off with the Office of Curriculum and Instruction with Dr. Politzis.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Good afternoon, I'm sorry, good afternoon, I'm being, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present today. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Vicky Politzis. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and tonight, I'll be sharing an overview of the Curriculum and Instruction Office, highlighting our priorities for the upcoming school year and outlining the budget impacts that support this work. This presentation is designed to show how our investments directly connect to student learning and the district's mission. I would like to begin with an overview of what the Curriculum and Instruction Office does. We oversee all instructional programs and guide curriculum development and serve as the district's liaisons with local colleges and universities such as TCNJ, Rider, and Princeton. We also lead a variety of committees, such as the Elementary Curriculum Council, the School Improvement Panel for the district. And in addition, we revise and align standards, supervise staff, coordinate professional development, and manage instructional accounts. To give you a sense of the scope of the Curriculum and Instruction Office, this slide shows how the office is structured. We have supervisors dedicated to each content area, from STEM and Humanities to the Arts, Wellness, World Language, and Athletics. This ensures K-12 alignment, targeted support, and subject area expertise. Supervisors just don't manage their areas. They also lead professional development in their content areas, and they oversee all of the curriculum for those areas. So, as I said, our work centers on four main areas. Curriculum development, where we design, plan, and evaluate programs for effectiveness. Partnerships with local universities, with strength in both teacher training and student opportunities. Coordination of staff development, which ensures our teachers have the tools they need to succeed. And finally, we seek and apply for grants, which allows us to fund innovation while being fiscally responsible. Every year, the Curriculum and Instruction Office develops three professional goals, and these are the goals for this current school year, and they were presented at the opening day convocation that we had with faculty. So, our first goal is around responsive practices, which focuses on social emotional learning and building a supportive climate. Our second goal integrates data to drive instruction, which ensures our instructional decisions are informed by meaningful evidence. And finally, our last goal is strengthening Tier One instruction in our multi-tiered system of support, which emphasizes high-quality core instruction and interventions. These goals are interconnected and grounded in both student needs and state priorities. Okay, so, the next few slides are organized by goals and what we are doing to address the goals. So, for the responsive practices goal, our first four days of school at the elementary level, we're focused on setting norms and routines. We have a Character Strong curriculum for, we've just are piloting a Tier Two program, but we've been, we've had the Tier One program for the last few years. And then, we also offer professional development in responsive teaching. All of these programs foster stronger relationships, improve school climate, and support social emotional learning. So, many of these initiatives are actually funded through our, some of our title monies and grant, or our grant support, which makes them sustainable pending we receive title monies next year. So, if you notice that the last bullet point has an asterisk, so I'm, I've put asterisks next to those activities or explorations which require funding outside of title monies, meaning that the district covers those costs. So, for Goal Two, on the, on the data side, we are expanding our Lincoln warehousing at the elementary level, which incorporating Intervention Manager, which will also help to support our third goal. We hope to build blended and personalized learning cohorts. So, we are on our ninth cohort that is fully run by teachers, and we are using structured data charts to help teachers make informed decisions. At the secondary level, on-course data helps us identify trends and respond more quickly to student needs. The goal here is to ensure every instructional decision is grounded in evidence. So, as you can see here, the two that are asterisk, the district does cover the cost of those. Okay, and then finally, our third goal focuses on strengthening Tier One instruction and multi-tiered system of support implementation. This includes offering instructional coaching sessions with our teacher leaders, offering targeted professional development, and consultant support. These efforts ensure that all students receive high-quality education with interventions provided early when needed. And so, as you can see, as of right now, all of our consultant work is being supported by our title or our grant money. One major feature that we are, or one major initiative that we're doing this year is we are collaborating with Achievement Network, or ANET, to evaluate our elementary ELA programming and making a deliberate effort to build capacity for new teachers. These steps are about strengthening the foundation of instruction across the district and ensuring new staff are well-prepared to succeed in our classrooms. So, I'm just mentioning this because our work with the, the consultants right now is being covered through Title Two. And for building capacity, of course, we have to, that's additional cost to the district because of the, the training that we have to pay for. Okay. So, looking into the following school year, '26, '27, we, these are, we plan to broaden social emotional supports in partnership with Rutgers Behavioral Health, which we have been in collaboration with them for a few years. We plan on expanding our character education program and prepare for new standards, including as McGrath was here, our climate change education. However, it's important to note that some of these may be shifted based on funding. So, as you've heard at various Board meetings, this is a tough budget year, and we've had to make some decisions for cuts to supplies in curriculum writing, and we might continue to have to do that moving forward. So, in terms, no, oh, okay. So, in terms of budget implication, the largest investment in the future year will be the K-5 ELA program, which we plan on rolling out in three years. Because we're not sure what that program will be, I don't know an exact cost, so I'm just estimating it would be between $100,000 and $200,000 a year. We also are going to be continuing with Character Strong program, and hopefully, that will be able to be paid for through our title funds pending we receive title money next year. Based on the exact cost of these items, though, I do want to stress that I will have to look at my current budget and make cuts likely. I know Bob asked me, if it's going to be $100,000 or $200,000 for the ELA program, where am I getting that money? So, I'm really going to have to take a critical lens at my current budget. Some of the things I've looked at that we may have to limit or eliminate is curriculum writing, which we eliminated for this current year. We might have to do that again for the following school year. I'm also taking a deeper look at our technology subscriptions to cut those that are not heavily prescribed to, or ones that have overlapping capabilities. In addition to, speaking more generally, there may be additional cuts to different supplies that we have per department or per building. Thank you.
Again, I, I asked Dr. Politzis to go through this and bring that up, just so we know, and we've been talking about it, we've been hearing from the, from the government now, the state government, that the revenue's not there, and we don't know what state aid will hold next year. We don't know what kind of enrollment waivers or health benefit waivers will get. We don't know what the Board's tolerance will be for tax impact. There have been districts around the state who have, have shunned the waivers and have gone to keep the tax rate down. That's the big discussions we're going to have, and I know that Vicky's budget this year took a hit with curriculum writing. That was, that was a, a big cut for her. And we're trying to figure, we're trying to figure it all out, trying to do more with less, and we just, at this point, need to identify those areas where we can afford to cut. Circling back to what Dr. Tree said, we have a staffing issue that we, that have to deal with as well going forward. So, we're going to have a lot of decisions to be made over the next six months.
Can you remind me why we are doing, why we're rolling out a new ELA program at the elementary?
Sure. Yeah, so currently, we are working with a consult, we, a consultant to do an audit of our current ELA programming, because we have a lot of different programs. So, we have phonics, we have writing programs, we have spelling programs, and there's a lot, and we have our units of studies. And there's a lot of variety in, in how it's being implemented and all of these different programs that teachers want, are using. We would just like to clean that up and make it more streamlined, and also, we are looking critically at the units of studies that we currently use to see if we, if the district wants to move in a different avenue.
So, if I could just really quickly roll back, if you remember the beginning of the so-called reading wars, when everyone was really examining what reading and writing workshop was, whether or not it could meet the needs of all students, and it's, it doesn't, right? You have to have that, that piece where you're teaching kids how to manipulate, inform sound through phonemic awareness. You have to teach them how to read and different ways to build up the mechanics of it before you can go into the reading and writing workshop, especially students that have dyslexia. So, we've done a lot of work with training all of our teachers in Orton Gillingham and making sure they can identify learning disabilities earlier. We have early interventions on, on that. We also have added back in those phonemic awareness pieces to make sure that students are learning phonics and how to manipulate sound. That was a separate program that we had to purchase and added on one grade at a time, grades one through three. However, reading and writing workshops still had amazing components, which is teaching kids how to, what good readers do and to teach them reading volumes. So, you have all these separate programs that someone needs to come in and examine, what do we need, what don't we need, within the minutes that you have to teach language arts, and make sure it's streamlined. So, what we don't want to do is buy a new program, because we've already invested in a lot of great programs and added reading programs and writing programs, but we need to make sure that we're, we're meeting the state's standards and also the means of our students, based on what we already have.
So, so I'm going to be probably a little too brutally businesslike, but what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we have a lot of programs, and we're looking for, A, to figure out how to use all of them better together, but perhaps to identify some potential cost savings, where we could eliminate some of the many programs that we have. But at the same time, we're going to spend $100,000, $200,000 doing that search. And so, my question is, will we actually get a return on investment, right? Will we get savings in excess of $100,000 to $200,000 on the tail end? And if we don't, can we just continue?
Well, one-
Letting teachers use the programs that exist in place and not spend that money there?
I think a lot, Dr. Tree, if you don't mind, a lot of that $100,000 to $200,000 is due to the training that the publisher of the, whatever company we go with provides, and that's very expensive. And I think we haven't been very consistent in offering trainings to our new teachers, which has created this inconsistency. And so, if we want to make sure that we are consistent, so that there is the same education going on at all of the four elementary buildings, we need to invest in this training.
Yes, and you also need to, it's also the expectation that you do evaluate your programs occasionally. And what you, if we don't make sure that we're being consistent and that we're meeting all the needs of the reader and make sure the program is fluid and there's, you know, you just learn that, making sure there's alignment horizontally and vertically, you're going to end up paying compensatory for students that were, that were missing, they're slipping through the cracks. So, that's the savings, is making sure that you're meeting the needs of the students, and we're not, yeah.
Yes, so we have these teacher leader positions in place, right? And if it's the training that's expensive, can we look into whether the teacher leaders can actually take up the training for the new staff that's coming in? Again, as opposed to going out and paying these guys $100,000 to $200,000?
We have been doing that, but for the programs that we currently use. So, for, and if we adopt a new program, like the teacher leaders are going to have to be trained on that program as well. So, right, so we're going to build capacity essentially within the district.
Yeah, I'm not trying to pick on you guys, but I'm going to start getting really cheap at this conference.
But Alex, just to give you an idea, when we did the Envision program, I think it was like $300,000, right, Bob? Okay, over two, two years, maybe? Yeah, and so, I mean, this, like, what I'm budget is not unheard of, it's just, it's expensive, yeah.
I've been long enough, I know that it's not that it's unheard of or expensive, it's just that if we cannot spend the money here, then we can spend it on something else. And Lord knows, there are other things that we could spend the money on as well, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And just, if, if we're going to spend money, early reading skills pay off. They, they pay off five, 10 times what you will spend later on in interventions. Not only reading interventions, mental health interventions. So, this is money well spent for our students.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say that as well, like, teaching children how to read and write, and to do foundational math skills, that's where it starts.
I, I completely agree with you, but the reason I highlighted this, right, is this is not money we're spending on a program. This is money where we've got programs in place and where either training, teachers are trying to identify some savings across the programs that we already have in place. So, could there be a possibility to be a little bit creative there, right? This is not questioning the programs that we have in place, right? I completely agree that we got to get kids to read as early as possible, because everything else will build on that.
Yeah, awesome.
Quick question. Right, I know the state has been very concerned with elementary ELA outcomes post-COVID across the state, and they have, I think, their own kind of initiative right now around that. Does any of our work kind of align with the state, or is that separate? Can you just tell me maybe a little bit about that?
So, this, the state has really put in to effect like different regulations that we have to follow, like in terms of the, like, when we have to do dyslexia screening, how many times a year we have to do benchmark assessments, notifying the parents of the benchmark assessment results. So, it's, it's more of things that we've, we've been doing, we just have to add to some of the things that we've been doing. But that won't really impact the programming, because the assessments that we currently use, it's already in the budget. But again, we are using these consultants to do an audit to see what, if we can be using our resources more effectively. So, if we use one program for, let's say, benchmarking, and it has multiple capabilities, well, we could potentially use that for other factors and then have a cost savings.
Awesome. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Okay. We are going to open, enter into public comment, and this is on any items of interest. Members of the public are invited to address the Board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond, direct the superintendent to do so, or direct the superintendent to do so. The Board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open.
One small addendum here. I am the timekeeper, so as Dr. Genovese said, you'll have three minutes. So, look for me periodically. When you come to two minutes- minutes. So look for me periodically. When you come to two minutes and 30 seconds, I'll put up a yellow sign. And then when you reach that, when you reach the end of your three minutes, I'll turn it red.
Hi, Sylvia Kosis, Seven Wydell Drive, Pennington, New Jersey. I have two questions tonight. In 2022, the Hopewell Township Community Development Department provided information to the board about estimated student generation from the three pilot developments when they are at full occupancy. There's a copy of that document coming around. It would be helpful for the public to have on a monthly basis, a similar chart that indicates the actual number of students generated from these pilots, residential pilots. This would permit the comparison of the estimated to the actual number. Committee Man Kevin Kuchinsky in an article, Financing a Better Future with Pilots, projected that at full occupancy in 2029, Woodmont Pilot would generate fewer than 30 students. How many students are currently enrolled from Hopewell Park, Woodmont, and Collections Development as of September 1st, 2025? Will the board provide this information so we can ensure that demographic studies and projections about enrollment from pilot developments are accurate and reliable? Question two, for the year ending June 30th, 2024, Mr. Colavita prepared an annual comprehensive financial report. His notes included a statement on tax abatements. Your statement seems to agree with the lawsuit filed by Pennington Borough to the State Supreme Court that pilots shift the financial tax burden of funding schools and thus the education of our children onto regional taxpayers who do not live in pilot developments. In another section, your statement seems to agree with the same lawsuit that states that school districts will lose millions in our ratable tax base for school revenue that funds our children's education, pays our staff, provides building, maintenance, and construction, and other critical needs. Mr. Colavita, could you please explain in terms that public can understand what you mean by, in 2023, a portion of the 5,314,271 tax abatement would have been allocated to the district? Does that mean if these properties were taxed conventionally and not with a pilot, that the revenue the district would have received at Hopewell's 57% tax rate would have been roughly $3 million? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Christine Rule. I'm from Hopewell Township. Good evening. I'm here tonight because I have a few questions about policy 5460 that is up for second reading. For those who are unfamiliar, this covers our high school graduation requirement for classes such as math and English. The board is looking to add a new requirement that all students take a class in intercultural sensitivity or service learning in order to graduate. I requested a list of classes that would cover this requirement, and many of them are not currently running. So I would like some clarity, and I have a few concerns. Are they not running because of low enrollment or teacher availability? What percentage of students currently take one of these classes? Isn't requiring all students take a class in this category equivalent to adding a program? What is service learning, and does it have a component that would require students to do a project or volunteer outside of normal school hours? We keep hearing that we may need to cut programs in order to balance our budget, and adding a new requirement seems counterproductive. What is the reason behind adding this? Why not let our children have a choice and decide if they need or want more education in these areas? Has anyone asked the students how they feel about adding this new component? I also have a question pertaining to the referendum. It has been widely discussed that we don't have enough room in our operating budget to keep up with the costs of major maintenance and repairs. And that is why passing this referendum is so important. Maintenance and repairs is an ongoing expense, and you've already had to add new projects since the last year. A few of you have said that the problem is with Trenton, and I would agree with you. If Trenton doesn't make a change to how our schools are funded, won't we need to pass referendums every few years or so? In Hopewell Valley, the average homeowner pays about 15,000 a year in property taxes. The national average is closer to 2,500. And most of us in New Jersey don't even have public sewer and water, trash pickup, a paid fire department, which most other states pay for out of their property taxes. We already pay the highest property taxes in the country, and no one seems to be trying to think of another solution outside of taxing us more. So my question is, can you give us more specific steps on who and how to reach out to the people in our state government that have the power to ease the education funding problem? There was an action campaign to engage the community members with our government, which helped us get a grant for the, for an ADA compliant playground. I thought it was such a great idea to create a template letter and encourage us to participate. Perhaps we can mimic that to help shine a light on the school funding problem. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Treese and members of the board. I'm here because I'm deeply concerned about the current kindergarten class size of one teacher to 23 five-year-olds, which is the current ratio today. This ratio is unreasonable and inconsistent with the standards of a blue-ribbon school district supported by some of the highest property taxes in the state. Kindergarten is a foundation year. At this critical stage, children are developing social skills, emotional confidence, and academic readiness. Expecting one teacher to effectively manage and support 24 young learners is simply impossible. For comparison, just a few years ago, kindergarten classrooms at Stony Brook had much smaller class sizes with the added support of a para professional. That model worked. Today's reality does not. Five-year-olds are expected to change themselves after bathroom accidents with only oral instructions through a half-open door while the teacher might simultaneously care for 23, 24 other kids. This is unfair to the teacher, and it is deeply inadequate to the children. Our children deserve the nurturing, supportive environment that is critical in their earliest years of education. The track record of our elementary schools is a result of the supportive environment in the years past. A change to that proven model disadvantages our children, especially our youngest and most vulnerable. I call on the district and the members of the board to take immediate steps to resolve this issue by adding a fully dedicated para professional support in every kindergarten classroom. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, we are going to close public comment. And Dr. Treese, would you like to address?
Yes, I'll start with this, from the top. Ms. Kosis, as I shared in my superintendent's report, we do have the demographer that's going to give us the exact numbers that are coming as a result of the pilot, and also a projection of what that will look like moving forward. And we're gonna need those numbers sooner than later. So yes, we will, we'll have that report to you. I can assure you, it's more than 30. Stony Brook, in the first week of school, had 45 new students. And you just heard from a Stony Brook parent tonight about, about the class, you know, and the impact of the new enrollment. So go ahead, Bob, you have the number there.
The collection at Hopewell, behind ShopRite, 46 students. Forge Circle, 70 students. Hopewell Park, 162 students. 278 total students. But that's, that's inclusive of out-of-district placements that came with it. So not all of those.
They're not necessarily in our schools.
They're not in our, they may not be in our schools.
Right. And that's some movement of parents that already live within the district that may have moved into a bigger house in those developments. But yes, that, that's not the norm. Most of those are new community members that we have welcomed in. In terms of, I'm gonna just jump down to Stony Brook, and then I'm gonna pass, pass it off to, to Bob for the tax abatement question, because it ties in. The largest kindergarten class in Stony Brook is 23, and there is a kindergarten para in there. The state code requires that when I hit 25 in a kindergarten class, I need to reach out to the executive superintendent and add a para, one para. So already, we add paras to classrooms when we, when we're not regulated to. And we used to add two. We can't afford to do that anymore, which is what I shared at the beginning. So while I know that this is not something that we are used to in Hopewell, and I hope that we can, we can move away from with, with figuring out how we're gonna fund our schools. But with 23 and a para, that is well beyond what the state requires, and it still is, is acceptable class size. And I would also argue that our teachers are very skilled and strong enough to handle this class size of a kindergarten class. 23 is not, not something that I, that I would panic about. But I am watching my primary grades as best I can, kindergarten, first grade, and third grade, to try to make any adjustments I can. So there are other sections there, and she would need to move things around. And we may have to, and if a special education number is increased, I might have to split a class. So that's something that we absolutely will have to do, and add additional paras if we can find them. In terms of the tax abatement, do you want to answer that question?
Not really. I think, I can't, the way the taxes would be calculated, and I have to really go through what, what Mrs. Kosis is saying here, but the, the way that taxes would, it would have to be a complete restructuring. That, that money that is abated, we're, we're a regional district, so the percent share would have to change. So the monies that were, the value of the homes that are not included in the assessed value would have to go back into the, onto the records. The tax assessor would have to take those records, equalize them, come up with a new percent share, to depend how the monies would be shifted around. Conceivably, my, what my thought is that if this money was to go back on the records, Hopewell Township would be assuming a larger portion of the tax than they would now. The, the math that she's done, I'm not sure that that, that's going to, to work. It doesn't work that way. It's just, it's a formula of equalized valuation versus assessed valuation. But it would, and that, that's the whole argument that's going on these days within the boroughs, is that because of the money that's removed from the tax rolls, the, that shifts the percent share and forces more money to go to the boroughs and less to go to the township.
So Ms. Rule, we're gonna be discussing the graduation requirement. But Principal Riley is here, whose hands are very deeply in the schedule. Do you mind us putting you on the spot just really quickly, if you would come up to the mic? So in terms of the graduation requirement, and I know that the, the board chair of the policy committee is talking specifically about this, and you've given us a list of classes that we currently have that would fulfill the requirements of, of both the service learning and/or if somebody decided to take a cultural competence course, and we can list those later. But could you talk to us a little bit about why certain classes are running and why they aren't?
Yes, on the list that, that we had provided, there are several classes that aren't running. Some of them run on an alternating basis. Others run depending on the, the projected enrollment for the year, and some of them run depending on different scheduling needs. We actually have a course on the list that was taught by a teacher who became a supervisor, then went to Timberlane. He is now back at the high school, and so we'll be adding that class back into the rotation next year depending on staffing. So I think all of those factors contribute to, to why courses are listed but aren't necessarily running at this point.
Could I just add to that? Because I think there was also a follow-up question around cost and then the percentage of students who are already fulfilling this requirement. And so I think in our discussion within the policy committee, right, we discussed this new requirement at length because there could be logistical concerns or other cost concerns related to it. And I think at that time, Ms. Riley indicated there'd be no additional costs because these are courses that already exist. And additionally, about 60 to 70% of the student body, I think you said, are already fulfilling this requirement.
Yes, yes. In the preliminary research that, that we did, I, it looks between 60 and 70% of the students are currently fulfilling. In addition, we would be able to remain staff neutral. It would just simply be kind of a reallocation of what students were choosing to take when. Additionally, one, I think part of your question, and if you'd rather not have me address it, that's fine, but about requirements outside of school, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Great. Some of the classes that are currently running do have a, a component that is required outside of school, but students are aware of that before enrolling. I think really, I can only think of two currently out of that entire list that do have that requirement. One is AP Spanish through the We Service component of the College Board. The other is our newly created environmental science course that we're offering for the first time this year. Everything else would be an exploration of, of service within the confines of the, the school day and, you know, within school hours.
And truly, most, most service learning classes, if they're really written the way they're supposed to be written, and ours are, the kids develop those service learning projects. So sometimes they happen right in the building. It's, it's things that they decide that they've identified as a problem and they want to do something about in their school or at the elementary school level.
Those were actually my questions as well, so you read my mind there. But also, one of the things we did talk about in the committee was looking at what other schools are doing. And right, a common option that some of the surrounding public school has was volunteer hours. And we had some of that concern too, right? That's, well, they're already going to school, and they have after-school activities, and now to add more volunteer. And so this was a way to really support them to do that, but within the school hours and for school credits, because that was important.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Principal Riley.
Thank you.
And I know we'll talk about the policy more and list the classes. There's a long, long list of classes that students can take. And then also, Ms. Rule asked about, is it going to become a custom that school districts need to go to referendum to fund some of our facility needs and to, to defray the cost of our operating budget, which is, you know, funding has been inadequate? Absolutely, that's something that you can petition at the state level. I don't know if it's appropriate, and I don't know if our, if our board attorney would suggest that the board write a form letter that the public puts out. But it's certainly something that you can do with your politicians. I know the largest pot of money that's allocated is for education, but those funds are limited now. They're starting to shrink. And who knows that with the new initiatives to kind of eliminate some of the outreach that comes from the federal government, our budgets are going to be affected even more. So paying attention to your, to your, the politics around public education, going to Trenton and expressing your displeasure on how we're funded. Believe me, as bargaining units, the superintendents do that all the time. We go to the state level, we invite our elected officials in, we let them know the pressure we're under all the time. But as, as a voter and as a taxpayer yourself, you can certainly go, like we do, and come as a group and really ask to be heard about the funding in, in your taxes. I do hear it, hear you, and I, and I feel the pressure. But believe me, we are pushing at our end all the time about what we're up against, because I'm not just facing it. All the superintendents in New Jersey are facing this.
So just another little aside to that. Years ago, there used to be a waiver, a cap waiver annually to do small referendum-style projects. Like, every year back in the day, we used to do a roof every year. We used to do, this was before air conditioning, and that's kind of changed where a lot of the money goes. We're putting more money into air conditioning now than we ever did. It was usually roofs and those types of projects. We used to do them annually in our budget because they gave you, you know, for the 800,000 it took to do a roof, you put that extra in your budget, and it came out the year after. The state wants districts to do referenda because they give you 40%. So they pushed it. They took that waiver out because they didn't want districts spending the entire amount on projects. They wanted you to go to referendum or rod grant, the rod grant way. But with the rod grant, you have to have the money upfront. So they want you to go to referendum, and a lot of districts like Princeton So they want you to go to referendum, and a lot of districts, like Princeton, who's done four referendums in six years, I believe it is, they've all passed, and they've gotten a lot of work done that way. So the only other way for us to do it is to get savings out of our budget. During COVID, when we didn't spend a lot of money, we were able to take money out of the budget, put it towards a capital project. And those of you who took the tour today, that money that was saved is building those boilers at a 40% cost reduction. With monies being spent the way it is, we don't have that kind of savings anymore. We don't have the money to put into our capital reserve. So again, I would encourage anybody to write to Senator Turner and, you know, the other legislators that affect Mercer County and the state of New Jersey, and ask them how they're going to adjust funding. I mean, I feel fortunate, and you might think, why we feel, because we've gotten money over the last seven years. This district has gotten more state aid, and we're at a point now where we're at the highest levels of state aid we've ever had. So I'm fortunate in that we're not Hillsborough or Franklin or those districts that lost millions, and even Robbinsville, who has held flat. Okay, a flat state aid is a loss. So we've been fortunate. So, you know, we're always looking for more, but again, I feel fortunate of where we are right now.
Great.
Okay, I'll make a couple of comments. One is on us kind of helping the folks in the community with understanding who they should be reaching out on various issues. I would agree that it's not necessarily appropriate for the board or the district to say, this is what you should say, but I don't see a reason why we can't put out like a cheat sheet of, hey, if you're concerned about these issues, these types of issues, these types of issues, these are the folks to reach out to in the state government and communicate with. And maybe that's something that the government or Relations Committee can look into. I had a related thought on that. Yeah, there is, to Ms. Ruhl's comments, I wanted to add my own perspective, having now been on the board for four years. There's layers and layers of problems that originate in Trenton, in my opinion, that create fiscal issues at district levels, and not all of them have to do or should be solved by Trenton finding a way to throw more money at the districts. There is mandates and all kinds of stuff that is thrown at the districts that is unfunded. So if I were as a citizen to be contacting my state representatives, I would be encouraging them to start looking at the real cost of all the things that they're requiring public districts to do that costs significant amounts of money, that they're not funding, that they just throw the law and said, here, you go figure it out how to do that. Because I think there is a fundamental problem there. So yeah, I just had to make a comment on that. And the other point on, oh, and then I was going to say to Ms. Kosis, yeah, we've, I've made a request that we put those numbers out about what the actual referendum numbers are, and I think we need to get it out to the various municipal governments before they make a decision, before they start making any decisions. I attended the public Pennington Borough Council meeting where the developer said that he, they were discussing a proposal for an 80-unit development, and he said, we expect to have 0.5 children per unit in that development. And because those meetings are on Zoom and were muted and do not have the ability to unmute, except during public comment, nobody heard me yell bullshit.
Any items of old business? Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. I need a motion to accept items on the consent agenda.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Okay, motion passes, and our first committee report is Finance and Facilities.
Thank you very much, Dr. Genovese. Okay, I have the microphone on. We can hear me okay? Great. Okay, so we had our Finance and Facilities meeting that we typically do prior to this meeting. We had Tom and Adam from Facilities join us. They talked to us a little bit about some of the change orders on some of the ongoing facility-related projects that we are hoping to address with the referendum. That included primarily the boiler project that we are going to be approving. We also had a chance to talk a little bit about some of the natural gas usage in some of the buildings and some of the facilities. I do think that it was nice to hear that we were saving money with some of these things, but it was not nice to hear that we were saving money on gas efficiency. Electricity went up 20%, so we moved all of that savings to electricity, which is just an ongoing conversation of where we're going to save money to spend more money that you're going to hear from us over the coming years. We talked a little bit about the pipe issue down the road at Bear Tavern that Tom and Adam and the team continue to do a great job to fill. Once we got done with facility updates, we did have a chance to talk about the bond council agreement, which I know is on the agenda today. I don't know, Bob, if you need me to comment on that at all, but if I do, just please let me know. And we also had a chance this month to meet again with Hopewell Township, as I think I've tried to be very transparent through this process of what we've been doing regarding the referendum. We have invited and continue to invite all of the mayors and their administrations to meetings to sit down and meet with us. We have done that since day one. I think that both Dr. Therese, as well as Bob Colavita, have done a great job being out front during this process. During that time, there have been some mayors that have taken us up on it, others that have not, and that has been challenging, to say the least. All of that being said, we did have another meeting with Hopewell Township regarding their pilot programs, as I think was alluded to earlier on today. We, as a board, are expecting multiple pilot programs for the population in our, in Hopewell Valley to know. There is active pilot discussions in Pennington Borough. There is active pilot discussions in Hopewell Borough. There are more pilot discussions that have happened at the township that we have not even seen that influx of students from. What we have asked, which I think is a reasonable ask as the board, is to be a part of those discussions early on. Some of those municipalities have allowed for us to be a part of it, others have not. I think that where we stand today regarding the township pilot and the money that has been promised to us publicly is, as of today, we have not heard from their attorneys, despite what may have been heard in the community. We are still waiting to hear from them. We are waiting to get something done. Dr. Therese has asked very eloquently to get a memorandum of agreement underway with a caveat of the lawsuit. At this point, they have said no to that, and we have asked them why, and they have not given us a direct answer. I share this with you out of pure transparency more than anything else. It was my hope as the finance chair in the Finance Committee that as we moved to referendum, that we could have moved and done so with this behind us, but unfortunately, we're not there, and it's disappointing, discouraging. You can name every word you need to say. What I think at this point, we all need to understand as a community is, this problem is only going to get worse before it gets better. And the challenge that we face for pilots is going to be one that sees over the next 24 to 36 months, more students coming into the community. We want to be able to say that this referendum is going to solve every problem, but in reality, it's not. I have been trying to be vocal about this, and I think that we have been as transparent as we possibly can through this process, that there is a lot of challenges when it comes to a school budget in a local level in a state like New Jersey. A lot of things that none of the administration has much control over at the end of the day because of the unregulated mandates, because of the things like pilot programs. And all we can continue to do is try to stay together as a community in a way that we can pass this sort of referendum and say, hey, if we want the programming to stay the same, this is the way we've got to do it. The one ask that I asked with the Finance Committee way back when we made the consideration to go to a second pilot and try it again was not affect the programming, because we know at the end of the day that a school's output is the type of education we provide, right? And we wanted to minimize that at all costs. But with that comes a trade-off, and the trade-offs are small, and we hear you, right? We've heard it. We see the emails. We know the student classes, I'm sorry, we know the class sizes with the number of students are high, but as Dr. Therese alluded to, we can't do anything about that right now until we take care of this referendum and then get into this long-term planning. But at the end of the day, we have a decision to make as a community. The decision is, do we want to do this and try to address it the way that surrounding communities are, or do we want to stop? And if we stop, this is not a threat. This is not a scare tactic. It's just reality. We are going to continue to have to cut in places. That's just the reality. There is a lot going on, not just at a federal level, not just at a state level, not just at a local level, that we, sitting here as a board, cannot control. And without that sort of control, we are at really an impasse when it comes to be able to say, cut here, don't cut there. So our hope and our goal is that we come together as a community, that we're able to address this in a meaningful manner. What I would encourage anyone listening on YouTube, anybody listening in the crowd, anybody listening on the phone on Zoom, is to please get to your local towns and ask them to get us involved in the process early. The reason we are dealing with this right now is because the township didn't get us involved early, plain and simple. If we would have gotten involved early, we wouldn't be rushing to do this. And unfortunately, we're continuing to rush to try to figure it out so that we can have a good story to tell for all of you. I don't like paying property taxes. Many of you have heard me say this. There's not many people in a room, when you raise your hand, that people go, yeah, I want to pay property taxes. But I think all of us can agree and say, we want to pay those taxes because we like the community we're in, we like the school district we're in, we like the output that the administration, the faculty, the staff, and the teachers give to our students. And that's what we're asking at this point. So this is me trying to be transparent with you. You should hear the angst in my voice. This has been a frustrating year. It has been extremely disheartening to see the lackadaisical approach of the other forms of government in the Hopewell Valley and what they haven't done to help support us. And I would hope and encourage all of those forms of government and the councils to join us in supporting the referendum, because that is a good thing for everybody. That's all I got to say. Let's do a motion to pass what we need to pass.
What you're going to be doing tonight is a first reading on a refunding bond ordinance for 2025 school bonds. This is not, I repeat, not, anything to do with the new referendum's proposed. This is the refinancing of existing debt from 2016. We've reached the minimum threshold of 3%. This first reading gets us in the process. What we hope to do, knock on whatever we're knocking on here, is that we can mingle this refunding with a successful referendum and do it all at the same time to save the cost of issuance. Okay, this is a good thing. This is going to save the district debt service over the next remaining, you know, 10 years of the bonds that we have left.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Motion passes.
And we already accepted the donation before, so I figured, no, it's good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we go to personnel now.
All right, I'm back. Round two. Okay, so the personnel meeting typically takes place before every board meeting every month. We had our personnel meeting earlier, and it was a great meeting, as always. Tonight, we are going to talk about two retirements that we do have. First, Kim Black, who is an occupational therapist at Hopewell Elementary. She's been here with us since 2010. Obviously, congratulations to her, but we are going to miss her, as we do all of our teachers who retire. We also have another retirement tonight, who is Tom Quinn, who was our Director of Facilities, who has been instrumental in helping to keep the district on track with all of our facilities' needs since he's been here in 2015. We wish them both the best. Additionally, we did spend some time talking about the normal items that we do this time of year. That is everything from some resignations and some new appointments to the extracurricular appointments that you'll see in the agenda. We spent a little bit of time talking about the rubric evaluation process, which I would encourage you guys to look at. And we also did our normal MOA that we do between law enforcement, Pennington Police, and Hopewell Valley Police, as well as the district. This is an MOA that comes down from the state that we typically pass this time of year. That has all been completed as well. Is there anything that I missed? All right, any questions from the board? All right. We're going to have to do a roll call.
Mm-hmm. You got it.
Do we need a motion for a roll call? Let's do a motion for a roll call.
Motion.
Second.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Slotman.
Aye.
Dr. Stiliano.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Dr. Genovese.
Yes.
Motion carries.
If I can just add before we move on, we really wanted to honor Mr. Quinn today, but he's like, I can't stay that late. But he's coming back in May when we celebrate all of the retirees, and, you know, we have to make, we get him something in addition to the flowers. I'm not sure he wants the flowers we give out, but we'll have to get him something.
But he's around till December, right?
He's around till the end of the year.
So we'll have to make him stay longer at one of the other meetings.
You work on that, please. He's done a lot for this district, yes, and continues to do a lot for this district.
Okay, education.
Education. I'm going to press the button, talk for a while. So we had a couple of things on the agenda that we discussed. We had a research proposal from Dr. Arslan at ETS, and she is researching how AI tools can be used to affect the learning experience for mathematics. So she has a proposed study that she was asking us to support for eighth graders. This would be an in-class assessment that the kids who would be participating in the study, if we okay it, would take. There were a couple of things that we discussed. One is, we of course want to make sure that the study is clear to all the participants, that parents and students have the ability to opt out. We discussed the commitment, the time commitment that Dr. Arslan is asking for. We felt that was a little bit too long, so Dr. Pelizos is going to go back to her and kind of push back and see if we can do a shorter commitment. We also, as part of that, we hidden a couple of things that will probably translate beyond this study. One is because AI is being used, we need to really understand how AI is going to be used, what kinds of models, right? Are those public models, private models? What kind of information is going to be shared? Make sure that that use is consistent with our own AI policy, but also make sure that the study participants, the kids, the parents, understand exactly what is being done with AI. So I think that's going to become, well, that should become an ongoing practice. And the other one is, we've been asking as a matter of practice that people who do studies with us provide the results to us, and sometimes they do, and sometimes things kind of move on. So there was a proposal to have them kind of initial a statement of assurance so that we have on paper, it's unclear how we force a vote, but at least we have on paper a commitment from them that they will provide the results back to us, and in this case, the tools that may be developed, at least for some limited time, used for free. So we discussed that, and I guess we're going to be going forward with something like that. So that was the study. We discussed the math curriculum across grades, and specifically the issue that there are some inconsistencies between the topics. So we discussed that, and I guess we're going to be going forward with something like that. So that was the study. We discussed the math curriculum across grades, and specifically, the issue that there are some inconsistencies between the topics that teachers cover across what should be the same level, which is not unusual in subject areas. But in math, it creates a problem just because of how serial the curriculum is and how it builds. We have a new, I guess, principal in charge of STEM. So he took an action to look into that issue, to work with the teachers, and give us a readout on how things are going towards the end of the year. We discussed the role of our new student representative in AdCom and how they could participate, given the new definition of the role. And we already figured out the timing of next meeting, which is October 7th at 8:00 a.m. And I think that's it. Any questions? And I don't think we have anything that we need to vote on for AdCom. Nope. There's nothing here.
Community relations.
Hello, hello. All right. Just want to make sure this thing's on. It is. Hi, everyone. We met on the 4th of September. I think it was just Dr. Genovacy and myself and Dr. Therese. So it was a small group at the time, but had a great discussion on, I think, between Mr. Peters and Dr. Therese. I think we've covered everything that we actually talked about during that session. So thank you both for already doing my work for me. But just for my own benefit, I'm going to mention, we did talk about the referendum, obviously, and all the different work that we're doing. In fact, the communications group that Dr. Therese's assembled will be meeting on September 25th, I believe, is the date that I have in front of me. But time, I think, probably in the afternoon, right?
The committee of community members that are helping us, September 25th, and I think it's at 6:00 o'clock.
I know the time in front of me, but for those who are still interested, we always do taking more comers. If anybody would like to participate in that, for sure. And then, obviously, Dr. Therese mentioned quite a few of the different events that you may or may not have seen. Some of us in recent days and weeks, and you'll continue to see us out there at various back-to-school nights, football games, the Hopewell Harvest Fair, which is, I think the forecast was good for this weekend. There will be a number of us there. Please stop by, say hello, and ask any questions you might have, because that's what we're here to do. And other than that, I did want to mention, this is, we did not talk about this, but I'll just flag this. If you do look on our website now, you'll see headshots and bios for many of us. So I know that's something we had brought up a few times from a community relations perspective. And thanks to those board members who have submitted those headshots. And for those who have not, I won't mention any names. But you can click through on the website and sort of see who we all are. So when you see us as a community, if you haven't been to a meeting, you know who we are. So I appreciate, you know, putting that together. I know Amanda was pretty critical in driving that as well, Dr. Stillianu, sorry, in making sure folks had that done. So that was the Community Relations Committee. And like I said, you know, referendum, totally referendum-focused these last couple of meetings, and I suspect that'll be the case for the next one as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make a quick comment. You know, this time around, I just wanted to thank John. Being a board member, and I think I speak for the other board members, having somebody that's been able to spearhead the PR side of this has been super helpful. So just wanted to publicly say thank you. Appreciate everything you've been doing.
Okay, SEL, which is me. We had a nice meeting and reviewed some of the initiatives that we are going to do this year. As per usual, there was a long list of different ways we're supporting social-emotional learning within the district. We already mentioned our Character Strong. Last year, we had Tier One rollout, and this year, we are rolling out Tier Two with that. We had our counselor and principals pilot that. And training has already occurred, and the program has started. We also launched Hope Squad in all six buildings last year. We had a grant that supported that training. We're looking at whether or not we're going to continue doing that in all six buildings, just because Hope Squad is very similar to what we're already doing with Character Strong. And we just want to examine whether it's appropriate for the elementary school.
I just wanted to clarify, we're going to continue 612. The question is at the elementary level. There's a lot of crossover with Character Strong, so we may end up just making Hope Squad a 612 implementation.
Yes.
There we go.
Yeah. So we will be continuing, just to make sure we're there, we will be continuing Hope Squad at the upper levels. And that Character Strong really is doing the same work that Hope Squad does at the lower level. So we're going to use the Character Strong Tier One and Tier Two supports. In addition to our in-school SEL programs, we also will continue this year with supports from Comprehensive Mental Health Services. And these services are really for students and families that need extra support, and they may not have insurance or finances to support those students. And that is title money that we use, correct? Yes. We also will continue to have our parent universities, so please look out for those dates. We are considering topics on AI and well-being in the age of AI. So that should be an exciting workshop. We also are having all of our counselors being trained in a solution-focused brief counseling. This is going to be our October professional development. And it will help support students with the child study team will be there, and school counselors. And then, we are also working on coordinating in-person training for parents with one of our local pediatric counselors on attunement and emotional regulation, which is so important for our students. And then, our own Strive PTO will be honored at the Municipal Alliance on October 17th. For those of you who may not know, our PTO, our Strive PTO is really great in providing small grants for our staff. And so they've done things like, excuse me, enabled staff to outfit, like, sensory areas outside our student's study center. They've also done small grants for teachers so that they could have yoga instruction and relaxation techniques in their classes and other sort of supplies. And so I think it's wonderful that our Strive PTO is being honored for all of the great work that they do for all of our students in the district. And that is SEL. Any questions? We will move on to government relations, although Druv is not here.
Yeah, do you want me to do it, or do you have?
Yeah.
So we had an update on the government relations. We've been working closely with Executive Benson in Trenton to try to figure out a way to get us to, our students, the ability to collaborate across districts, which was one of our goals on our strategic plan that community members expressed an interest in. So one of the things that we've targeted is that one of the organizations that we use for assemblies called the Young Audience Organization. They put on performances for our students in our elementary schools. They bring in artists that are residents, and they bring in cultural experience to our students. And most of the school districts in Mercer County do work with the Young Audience Organization. So what we're looking for from Trenton is to help us, one, support bringing students across elementary schools together for a joint assembly. So we would identify, you know, maybe a grade level in a school, because some of the districts are much larger than we are, that would come together in one venue to watch a performance. So we're looking at the War Memorial as a possible opportunity. We're looking at them helping us with technical support, some funding and busing and establishing this. We're in the early stages of it. But this would be a great way for kids to connect over the arts and then maybe even continue the conversations virtually around what they've learned in that experience. Another thing that we're looking at in this initiative is ways for our peer leaders or our leadership groups in our schools to work together, to cross-train and to put on events with younger kids and come to visit each other's schools and train the kids. So those are the two things that we're working on. Peer leadership was one. Principal Riley is also key in helping us with that. Our student athletes, working on building citizenship across athletic organizations. She's already working with that, with Mr. Becker, at my request, to really look at extending that, because we play and we come together at games. How do we extend that good citizenship and being good student athletes across districts? So that's what we discussed, and we're still working on more ideas on ways that we can work across districts. That's all I have for government relations.
Thank you. Policy.
So the Policy Committee met on September 5th, and we were joined by Ms. Riley. So thank you for joining us, Principal Riley. So the first thing that we discussed was the student representative position. And as we talked about, sort of the enhanced job responsibilities associated with that position in order to increase student engagement in board activities. And specifically, we wanted to sort of set up a process to ensure that our student representatives are able to attend Policy Committee meetings when there are policies that are relevant to the student body. So we are going through the process to look at what policies are counter for the upcoming year and to make sure that we can schedule those meetings at times when the student representatives can attend. The second thing we talked about, and this policy was up for review only at the moment, was Policy 5600, Regulations, Student Discipline and Code of Conduct. So we do review this code of conduct periodically. But there was a specific question that came up during this review. And it was really about how we treat lipalike substances, like dates with no nicotine or non-alcoholic beer, for example. As you know, these are sort of becoming more common, and policy is currently silent on this. So we decided that we'd go through sort of an information gathering process as a next step here. So Dr. Therese is speaking to other superintendents to see how they treat these lipalike substances. And we're also going to be in touch with the MJSBA to see if they have a model policy around this. Okay. So as you can see from the agenda here, we have one policy up for first reading, and then we have three policies up for first reading abolishment. So this is Bylaw 0177, Professional Services is up for first reading. Policy 1648.11, The Road Forward COVID-19 Health and Safety. Policy 1648.13, School Ethnics and Vaccination Requirements. And Policy 1648.15, Record Keeping for Healthcare Settings in School Buildings COVID-19 are up for first reading abolishment. So can I have a motion in a second to bring this up?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll start with Bylaw 0177, Professional Services. So this bylaw requires the school board to establish a maximum dollar limit for professional services annually for each type of professional services. So this is really to ensure that the board makes every effort to minimize the cost of professional services. The policy also indicates that contracts for professional services will be issued by the board in a deliberate and efficient manner that really ensures we are receiving the highest quality services at a fair and competitive price. So this policy was last reviewed in 2010. And the revisions to the bylaw that you see here really just incorporate minor revisions made into updated administrative code regarding the awarding of contracts for professional services. So I'll stop there and see if any of my Policy Committee colleagues have anything to add. Any questions or concerns about this one from the board? Okay. And then we have these several policies here that we're abolishing. They're really COVID-area policies. So the district does continue to follow the local and state health department guidelines as they relate to COVID. However, the guidance really has changed since 2021 and 2022, since these policies were first implemented, making them no longer relevant. Are there any questions, concerns about abolishing these policies? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any of those abstaining? Can I have a motion in a second to bring for second reading? Policy 5460, High School Graduation. Policy 5339.01, Student Sun Protection. Policy 3216, Dress and Grooming for Teaching Staff. 4216, Dress and Grooming for Support Staff. And Policy Regulation 9150, School Dispers.
Motion.
Okay. So we did review these policies in depth at the August meeting during our first read, so I won't spend a lot of time on these. But because it came up earlier in the meeting, I'll touch for a second here on Policy 5460, High School Graduation. So just reminding folks, the main revision that we incorporated into this policy is that students complete 2.5 credits of coursework that promotes either service learning or cultural competence. And we really felt that this requirement was important to help advance the mission statement of our district, which really prioritizes giving students the skills that they need to positively impact the global community. So we did have one request that came up during first reading, and this was to add definitions to the policy for cultural competence and service learning. So the edits that you see in here now really speak to that request. So he defines cultural competence as the ability to understand, communicate, and effectively interact with people from diverse backgrounds. And then he defines service learning as a structured learning experience that combines community service with preparation and reflection in order to foster civic responsibility and meaningful community engagement. So does anybody have any questions, concerns about this policy or any of the others up for second reading?
So since I requested the clarification, I'll just make a nitpick. You're using the term "cultural competence." I wish that was in the policy. I like that more than what's being used. But I think since you provide the definition of what the terms are, I am comfortable with that. And to, I think Ms. Rurs earlier commented, where this came from was, I think, several years of discussion in the board about finding ways to get our kids both either, well, hopefully both, but at least either into the broader township that we're in, right? And connecting them with, be it the farming that's going on or other things that are going on in the township, in the Hopewell Valley, not the township, right? And/or just exposing them to peers that have a different lived experience than kids who grew up in Hopewell Valley. I know from my own kids, you know, they, even going to Brooklyn, they find some of that somewhat bewildering. And Lord knows, I've exposed them to a little bit of that. So I support the idea, and I think this is one way of implementing it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments, questions, anything to add?
Dr. Resnick. Mr. Slotman.
Aye.
Dr. Stillianu.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Dr. Genovacy.
Yes.
Dr. Lilliston. Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Board calendars. Can I get a motion to review board calendars?
Motion.
Easy one is personnel, October 13, 6:00 PM. It looks like Dr. Pulitz has superseded us and got in at October 7, 8:00 AM. So we'll get that one down.
October 13?
Personnel.
Personnel is right at the board meeting, which is October 13.
Okay, and I mentioned to finance before the meeting started, I'd like to do October 6th at 8:00 in person if we can with the, to discuss health benefits network for everybody.
Oh, the health benefits. That's right. That's the one I said I was gonna skip. I can make it at 8:00 AM on the 6th.
It's a Monday.
Okay.
And you said it's gonna be in person at the board.
We also had, we selected education program, you already said, October 7. And then we have a policy we picked September 26. What time is that? Eight o'clock in the morning.
I'll reach out to Drew tomorrow via email and see when he wants to squeeze in government relations.
ICL?
ICL.
October, does October 9th at 8 work for you? Mike, Amanda, Jackie?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. 8:00 AM.
On October 9th.
Yeah, that's, that's it, community relations. Last but not least, I don't know, I'm an 8:00 AM, I know Jackie, whatever works for you, I've probably not gonna be traveling around, so if there's a, I like the 8:00 AM time slot myself.
Yeah, I do too.
So any day that's good for you, Dr. Treese, is fine with me. Drew isn't here, so.
Let's go to Mrs. Dr. Genovasi, what works for you?
Let's do, how about Wednesday? Wednesday at 8:00, does that work for you? Your schedule's probably worse than.
This Wednesday at 8:00 or what?
No, no, I'm sorry, October 8th, like the week before the board meeting? Or do you want to meet sooner? Do we need to?
Oh, I have PD that day.
Okay. You tell me, your schedule's more crazy than that.
I can do Thursday.
Thursday, we already have. Thursday, Thursday's the 9th and we already have ICL at 8:00.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Friday.
Oh, Friday the 10th.
That works, okay. Community relations Friday the 10th at 8:00 AM.
Okay.
What was the date?
Friday the 10th.
Community Relations Committee.
Mr. Kapadia asked if Wednesday, October 1st at 10:30 AM would work for his committee, government relations.
Okay, I'm sorry.
October 1st at 10:30 AM.
I can do a half an hour at that time, although that meeting might get canceled that I have there, so.
You want to try to put it in that slot and see what happens?
Yeah.
How about you, Mr. Dr. Wilson? October 1st, Wednesday at 10:30.
First Wednesday at 10:30? And October 1st?
October 1st.
Okay, so that works.
Okay. All those in favor of approving calendars?
Aye.
And reprimising, abstaining. Motion carries. Okay, any new business? Let's see.
So there is a new business item for board. Well, there's an item on there for board self-evaluation, but you, that's just a notice that it's coming.
Okay.
We'll start getting that out on the, on the platform. You guys can start working on that.
Okay. Okay. And we'll make sure we get.
Can I just make a quick comment about the board's self-evaluation? So I think we do this every year and we usually see the feedback, which is really helpful. And I think make very efforts to integrate it, but I think what we regret this year is if we can really look at it as a board and think critically about how we can integrate it into our processes and practice to really continue to improve upon what I think we're already doing well.
Okay, we're going to move into our next public comment. Okay, so we're opening up public comment for any items of interest. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open.
And just a reminder, we can have three minutes for public comment. At two and a half minutes, I'll hold up the yellow sign and at three minutes, I'll alternate track.
Hi, Sylvia Kosis, Seven Wydell Drive, Pennington, New Jersey. The Pennington Borough Council has decided to seek review by the New Jersey Supreme Court Hopewell Township's controversial 30-year tax exemption agreement with the developer Lennar. Since Assistant Superintendent Colavita's report, which I referenced earlier, supports Pennington Borough Council's position that these pilot arrangements fundamentally undermine the principles of fairness and regional cooperation that should govern how municipalities with regional school systems treat each other, community members suggest four things. The board submit an amicus brief to the Supreme Court in support of the borough's lawsuit that details how pilots allow municipalities to circumvent their obligations to regional school districts and may potentially violate the state constitutional requirement for thorough and efficient educational funding. Two, the board through its Government Relations Committee strongly encourage our state district 15 legislatures, as was mentioned before, Ms. Turner, Ms. Reynolds Jackson, Mr. Varelli, to support legislation that will require municipalities share certain payments in lieu of property taxes with school districts and to address school funding in, just in general. Three, the board adopt a resolution affirming the district's commitment to the fundamental need for equity for all taxpayers in a shared school district. Every family in Hopewell Valley who pays property taxes conventionally is subsidizing Hopewell Township's tax abatement development decision. The township pilot agreement allows them to externalize their cost of their decisions onto neighboring communities while keeping 95% of the benefits to themselves. And fourth, all 10 Mercer County public school superintendents through the Mercy County Association of School Administrators release a letter to families and educators to affirm their commitment to the principles of fairness and cooperation in school funding. The current framework for pilots creates a dangerous precedent for this state that allows municipalities like Hopewell Township to make tax policy decisions that devastate their neighbors without any accountability. Will the board act on these four suggestions? Pennington Borough feels they have a moral obligation to protect their residents from this injustice. Will the board support them in their efforts before the Supreme Court? And I'm gonna just ask again, is the board gonna print this in the agenda on a monthly basis starting next month? We can't trust demographic reports if we don't know what the numbers are. Thank you.
My name is Brian Kavanaugh and I live in Hopewell Township. Regarding the research you talked about with AI development, I would strongly suggest you look at the information that's being provided right now by the Center of Humane Technology, Center, excuse me, Center for Humane Technology. They put out a weekly podcast, or close to weekly podcast called Your Undivided Attention. And they're not against AI technology, but their big concern, especially because they were tech developers themselves before they saw what social media was doing. One of them literally was the person who created the infinite scroll feature that all of social media now uses and then realized what that did in the race to the bottom of the brainstem. And his biggest concern is in the way that AI is trying to leverage our evolved ability to form relationships and how it's trying to hijack that to create relationships. So I strongly can encourage the board to look at the information that they're putting out before they encourage any AI usage, but especially if we are piloting AI research in our classrooms. And I'd also want to ask that if there, what safeguards we can put with the way that AIs right now, as they're being understood, gobble of information, we can do to ensure our students' privacy in this research. Thank you.
Okay, if there were no other public comments, public comment is closed.
So I'll, I'll start with Mrs. Kosis's appeal to the board and I can't answer on behalf of the board, but what I can say is that it's not the board's place, it's not the Board of Education's place to sort of lobby for, for legislation that's happening that regards the municipalities. What we can do and what we continue to do is have conversations directly with those municipalities and hopefully that they would be upfront in their communications with us before they go out and make decisions that do affect us. You asked for the numbers, we shared them, that's on the record. This recording will be launched, people can share it as much as they like. The demographer's report won't just give us projections, he will talk about where we are right now based on where the kids are currently coming in, in addition to projecting forward. He did project forward that we would have growth, right? Not zero, not 30. So looking at that moving forward, but we do have to have frank conversations with the municipalities. When he goes to them, they have to be upfront and honest with what they're expecting in terms of units that they, that they're exploring to bring in. That's key to this conversation. About how much we can move legislation on whether or not they should have policies or not, we're fighting the good fights, we're having the battles with them just on our regular funding. That is something that I urge the community to take up if you're not in agreement with how they're operating with these pilots. You have a bigger voice than we do on that because we're an educational organization and our focus has to be the schools and how we have to manage our schools within our set of rules. What they're doing outside of the municipalities is not how, we can really impact what they're doing. Looks like you want to say something, Dr. Resnick.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say that, I mean, I joined the board towards the tail end of COVID and there were still some discussions about other issues that the district may or may not take a stand on. And I thought back then that the district needs to focus, like we need to stay away from spending time and money on fights that are not necessarily our own and, but also are very unlikely to be one, right? That being said, I don't think there is anything wrong, and I think this is something that the Government Relations Committee may want to talk about in sharing the experience of this district with the aftermath of the issues that the pilot program created with the state lawmakers, right? I think that is something that doesn't take a stand on the ongoing litigation, but highlights the facts of whatever happens with the litigation, right? What issues the way that, but the pilot program itself is structured, right, have created for the district. And I think that is something that we, to me, should be able to do and I'd like to, again, pile on more work for the Government Relations Committee to talk about how and if we can do it.
And then the other, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes, Mr. Kavanaugh, we are, thank you for this resource, Center of Humane Technology, I took a note. We do have one of our folks that works in our technology department that's in charge of education, who's worked very closely with us in developing our AI policy. Unfortunately, AI is in everything, including Google Apps for Education, which is designed to, to, to reach certain students. We do have to change our acceptable use policy and parents signing off on what kids have access to and don't have access to. They're already starting to change some of the models of, of students being able to create content and those sorts of things. However, you know, students are using AI, whether we allow it in schools or not. So teaching them how to do it safely, which, which models are safe and which ones aren't, regulating which ones we'll allow in our school district and we won't allow in our school district are all conversations we're having. And we're also coordinating with the Pennington Borough Library to do a big read on some short stories about AI and AI going terribly wrong and technology. And with that, he's going to have a night where parents, grandparents, caregivers can come and learn what they don't know about AI and ways to protect their children from it and themselves, like what you shouldn't be plugging into it and how you shouldn't be using it. But you're right, it has a great ability and that there's also great dangers that we have to be careful of. So thank you for that.
Okay. Okay. Will we be taking action?
I don't know.
So will we be taking action with executive?
Yes, we may.
We may take, okay. So a motion to enter into executive session. We will be discussing HIBs. A student matter and the superintendent contract. Action may be taken.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Okay.
Pam, did you first or second that?
No, she first.
I got, I mean, but this mic is not streaming live, right? He said my calls.